This regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order. It is October twenty eighth, unless there's any objection, this meeting is called to order. Seeing no objection, the meeting is beginning. Councilman Secunder, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge? I hear you coughing over.
Please rise for those who are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us, and above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do public comment, I want to make one agenda change. I guess I'll need somebody to make a motion, but I'd like to move the Tree Top Quest renewal from number six under just consent to number six under business items, but somebody needs to make a motion.
Move that we move number six and remove it from consent and place it as number six under business items.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, did you get that Sharon? Okay. All right, public comment, comment, Warren Salloway. Just at the microphone. Do you need some assistance? I can send. Okay. Okay. Jay's coming, okay.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. You'll have three minutes. Just start when you're ready. Uh, you'll have three minutes to speak, three minutes.
Okay.
All right, and there's a timer right there.
Okay.
Okay.
It won't take that long. Uh, I live on Happy Hollow, corner of Fountain Blue. And the other day I noticed they were doing some surveying work on Happy Hollow up at Peela. I did some research on what was going on, and it appears that y'all are starting to do a sidewalk. I thought a year ago that we voted down the money for it, and I thought it was dead. And I and all the neighbors I've talked to, uh, we're on the, uh, west side of Fountain Blue with no sidewalk. There's a sidewalk on the other side. We're against it. Is sidewalk on the east side? Basically, we don't need it, and I I noticed that the people walking, their dogs poop, and they don't clean up, and basically, I don't want the mess of cleaning up dog poop in my yard. And we don't need it, and you're wasting money. And I was just wondering why the hell you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is not a two-way discussion. If Jay or somebody could give you a card, that will be helpful. Ali.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for having me. I'm Ali Bachbud. Um, I know there's a couple of things on on the agenda for budgeting. I think I've made my comments pretty clear on that, reviewed it. Um, we trust you to do what we need to do with the budget. I appreciate that. I think I made comments a while back ago on interest rates, and since then, interest rates have dropped pretty steeply. So I again politely remind the council just to keep interest rates into consideration with any budget conversations or any type of projects that come up, as I obviously will make a big effect for the investments, as well as any bonds that might be taken out and or any other things. In fact, if I know we had a bond, um, thing shot down a while back ago, and if interest rates were to steeply decline, might be an opportunity to re-review that. Uh, what I really wanted to talk about today was, um, you know, Dunwoody's thriving. I think that's the right word. Uh, a lot of great things are happening in Dunwoody, and a lot of the reason why why it does happen is really because of the open chain of communication we have here. Um, if I needed to get on Eric's calendar, it's not that hard. If I needed to speak to the mayor, it's not that hard. I think all of you are are very open to, uh, reasonable conversations if something happens, or if I need a concern or something addressed or something explained. Now, what gets interesting is as you get higher on the chain, and as more, um, representatives have more constituents, it's much, much more difficult. Um, so we recently had an event with the police department, which was fantastic crowd, and we had, I think, Representative Tran appear there. Um, great, been trying to get in touch with that guy forever, finally was able to come, uh, communicate with them, talk about more global, bigger issues statewide that, um, I had interest in. So getting right to the point, what I was going to ask this council is, you know, again, communication in a more local level is fantastic. As we get higher, it's harder. So if this council, if the city could be of assistance and maybe getting um, other representatives that are a little bit outside of our, I mean, even like Robert Patrick, I mean, God bless, getting on that guy's calendar is interesting, but, um, uh, even something like that, having someone like that maybe come and address, or even invited to one of our community events. We can then have an opportunity as citizens and maybe be able to finally approach them, be able to talk to them about bigger issues on a decab level, um, as we get higher up again in the government, different things on, on the state government. Again, we're not expecting Dunwoody to invite Brian Kemp to anything, but any, any kind of communication, any type of imitation of that sort, any type of open line of communication that you can assist the citizens with so that we can kind of address the bigger issues and hopefully help the cab thrive as much as Dunwoody, than going on a more global avenue and just kind of helping different things. That would be very appreciative. So being really redundant and saying it over again, just any type of assistance from the city and even inviting these politicians to more global events or allowing for an easier chain of communication would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Head.
Hello, I'm Martha Head. I want to speak for just a moment or ask a question really uh, about the Happy Hollow sidewalks. This question doesn't include the subject of bike lanes. Just sidewalk. And my question, I'm going to read from some official bulletin. The purpose of this project, the project is the Happy Hollow sidewalk from Peela Road to Dunwoody Club Drive. The purpose of this project is to complete the sidewalk on the west side of Happy Hollow Road, consistent with the city's goal of having sidewalks on both sides of all collector arterial roads. My question is to take a hypothetical case. If every homeowner on Happy Hollow, west side of Happy Hollow is opposed to sidewalk, why is that the city's goal? To build something that nobody wants. So if that question is answered during this evening's business meeting, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just want to clarify, uh, one thing, which is is under our interpretation of state law um, and the Open Records and the Open Meetings Act, the public comment is not two-way discussion. What I can do is ask, is Michael Smith in the room? This? No. He's watching. If Jay Van Nicky can give you a card, and if one of you can call him tomorrow, we can arrange for someone to get in touch. Because it's not on the agenda tonight, and so I'm not, I don't think we're prepared. Uh, is that correct, Eric? Um, to, to give you all the answers to your questions. But if someone will call him tomorrow, we'll connect you with the proper people. All right. Michael Starling. So that concludes public comment. There'll be another section at the end of the meeting for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm here for the third quarter economic development update. Um, we, uh, we, we had a bit of a, a down quarter on retention, um, meetings. Um, as, as you all know, uh, Rosemary Watts, uh, transitioned over to create Dunwoody, so I was down a staff person. So we had, uh, far fewer retention meetings than normal, uh, but had a number of ribbon cuttings, including transportation insight, um, which was, uh, over twelve hundred jobs coming to, to Dunwoody. A number of restaurants, many of you know this. Um, there will be a significant uptick, we think, in the fourth quarter ribbon cuttings because the, the number of restaurants that are opening at at High Street. Uh, the phase three of the Greenlight Art Project is underway. We should see those, uh, wraps going on the utility boxes, uh, in the next, uh, three or four weeks. Um, earlier this quarter, we had a, uh, a, a meet and greet with the Ravinia um, business, uh, office owners. Um, we think that went really well. There were, uh, a lot of a lot of people filled out the comp plan, um, um, survey. We're going to do those again, not just with Ravinia, but some of the other office, uh, buildings. We think that's a great way to get the city out in, in front of, uh, a different constituency. We have the Housing Forum, the Edge City two point O on November seventh. We still have room, uh, there. So if anybody's looking for a ticket, uh, we've got plenty of space. And then Fernanda Kirchner with, uh, it, the new Business Retention and Cultural Development Manager, um, started, uh, three weeks ago. So excited. I know a number of you have, have met her. Excited to have Fernanda onboard, and we'll, we'll get her to come to a, a meeting at some point to introduce herself. So at the, earlier this year, we did the, uh, the retreat, the City Council Retreat, and a number of questions came up around marketing and branding and sort of what is our elevator pitch um, for economic development for the city. Um, we put this together using a number of, 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 of documents. I discovered Dunwoody back in two thousand and nineteen. Um, helped the Economic Development Department. We hired a consultant to come in to sort of think about our bigger picture. So a number of, a lot of this information is from, from that document. And then, of course, uh, working with, with Jennifer and Kathy on sort of our brand position. Um, we've got three basic um, attributes that are unique, we think, to, to Dunwoody. Uh, the first is that we straddle sort of the line between I T P and O T P, the idea of inside the perimeter is more urban, outside the perimeter is, uh, more suburban, and Dunwoody really sits right on, on the middle of that. And we've actually used um, at the perimeter, A T P and some of our marketing in the past. Uh, our location, um, at the center of, of the Atlanta region, as population and employment has grown in, in the region, most of that growth has occurred north. So we find ourselves uh, as close to the center of the region a, as you can get. Two eighty-five, four hundred, um, really is main and main of, of the region, how people get around. And you add Marta to that, we've got a, a really, uh, unparalleled, um, transportation network right here at our front door. Um, and third is unlike most cities around us, we lack a large arterial road that sort of cuts us into. So you think Roswell Road, Beaufort Highway, those types of roads. Um, our roads are smaller. It makes us feel a, a lot more neighborhood-y. Um, and we think those three attributes sort of set us apart from, um, from other jurisdictions around us. So the consultant who we worked with came up with this brand message. So this is their wording. And to me, this is our, our thirty-second elevator speech. Um, you know, at the intersection of two, two eighty-five and four hundred, ten million square feet of office, the retail, this is really what makes us unique and why companies would, would move here. So with that, what Jennifer and Kathy do is they, they create advertising using that sort of brand message, and this is brand new, um, just a, a few weeks old. Using that Cosmetolitan vibes and the small-town feels, sort of again, that I T P and O T P, and then focusing attention on the fact that we're at the center of the Atlanta region. Um, the heart of it all, right here in Dunwoody. Onto hotels, and every quarter we, we take on a, a different, um, commercial category, and this, uh, this quarter is hotels. Uh, we have twenty-one hundred hotel rooms. We've got some more coming, and I'll talk about that in, in just a moment. Um, that we, we, last year or year-to-date, we've got about seventy percent occupancy, which is doing quite well. Um, as most of you know, the hotel market regionally is doing quite well, um, but the, but Dunwoody leads in, uh, average daily rate growth as well as revenue per available room. And that's the entire region. Uh, we, we have just under a hundred dollars revenue per available room, which is really the, 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 what guides most hotel investment. They're looking for a RevPAR as, as high as possible. You get RevPAR by taking average daily rate and occupancy and, and combining those, and that's how you get, get RevPAR. Um, and hotels represent about five percent of our commercial uh, property value. That does not include hotel motel taxes, which is about five million dollars that the hotels create. Some of that comes to directly to the general fund, some of it goes to the Discover Dunwoody. Um, but obviously hotels are, are a big, have a big impact on, uh, on our economy. This is brand-new data that we got from Placer AI. And so we are not as familiar with this as we are some, some of the data we get from the, uh, Discover Dunwoody. Uh, but they track visitors using cell phones. And they estimate that Dunwoody has half a million visitors per year, unique visitors to the city. That is people who live somewhere else and spend at least one night in Dunwoody. And that produces about one point three million visit nights. So obviously, most people stay more than one night. Um, and they spend over a hundred and seventy-three million dollars in Dunwoody. The spend is based on actual credit card information that, that Placer AI gets from a third party. So that's direct dollars that they estimate come from, from the city. To give you an idea of some of our competitors, Brookhaven, uh, they estimate four hundred thousand, um, overnight trips and one point with nine hundred and seventy thousand, um, visit nights, represented about a hundred and seventeen million dollars in spend. So it's a comparable city. About this little, little larger than us, of course, they get significantly less spend from visitors. Uh, Petri Corner is about three hundred thousand, um, overnight trips and eight hundred thousand visit nights and, and just less than a hundred million. Sandy Springs, larger than us, almost a million overnight trips, two point six million visit nights and two hundred and twenty-eight million in spend. But again, they're twice our size. So I think this shows that Dunwoody sort of, uh, the, the impact that, that tourism has on us is much larger than, than other jurisdictions are same size. This is where that spend goes. So it's each category. Eighty-nine million, uh, goes to hotels, thirty-two million to retail and restaurants. We look back at a study that Discover Dunwoody did four or five years ago, and what they spent, the, the, the spend is pretty similar to what they estimated as well. And this is where those visitors are coming from. The largest group of visitors actually comes from the Atlanta region itself, almost half. Athens Clark County is the next, New York, you know, Washington. It, it, it's, it's pretty amazing at the, sort of the breadth of, of, of where people come to visit Dunwoody. And as a reminder, most of our visitors are business-related. That's why some of the larger business areas like Chicago, Washington, New York, that's why they're represented. Um, vast majority of people who spend nights here are, are on business. The new Element Hotel is going to add a hundred and forty-five rooms to that, so we'll have twenty-two hundred forty-five rooms. November sixteenth is their ribbon cutting, so the tenth hotel in Dunwoody, um, is opening. Uh, this data comes from the Edge City two point O study. They, the consultants looked at each and every commercial category and sort of gave us their ideas on where the trends are and what we should be looking for. Um, most of our hotels were built in the eighties and nineties. The larger hotels, even though we've had five hotels built since the city was formed, most of those have been smaller select service hotels. Crown Plaza, the Marriott, um, the larger hotels were built, were built in the eighties and nineties. Uh, we have a diverse mix, and again, leading, uh, the region in, in average daily rate and revenue per available room. We think a lot of that has to do with Marta, uh, the transportation network and the fact that all of our hotels are surrounded by amenities. So if you're traveling on business, you're going to, you're, you're going to go somewhere where you can walk to dinner. You don't want to have to have a car. So we think that's why, one of the reasons why our region is, uh, the city is doing so well. And they also looked at, at ways we might go upmarket with hotels. It's been very difficult, um, for, for the perimeter market to get a more upscale, um, hotel. Their idea is that we really need to sort of bend the curve. Um, we need to focus on amenities of the entire market. Um, bring in, hire in restaurants. Sort of rebrand Dunwoody in the perimeter market to, to a slightly higher level, and they think we've got an opportunity um, to, to recruit a, a bit of a higher-end, um, hotel. So that's, that's the end of, uh, of, of the update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Uh, anybody have questions? John.
Thank you, Michael, for the presentation. Very informative. Um, last month, or last quarter, you talked about office. And this one is, uh, hotels, and I appreciate the update. Couple of years ago, we had, we put in place financial incentives for reworking on things like that. How is that working in the sense of both office, hotels, restaurants? The financial incentives that we put in a couple of years ago, are they being successful? And if so, let me follow up with it, just so you have it in your thought. You just talked about new hotels and more things coming. Is there any possibility for incentives that are already in place for maybe more convention space? We have a very limited amount of convention space or meeting space in these hotels, and where could our incentives, if not already successful, or if they are successful, happen for more convention space?
Uh, so, so first, the incentives that we did were specifically for office users, and, and no one has taken us up on one of those. We have talked to a nu- number of companies, um, about using those incentives. Do you remember we, we've the we, we, I think a hundred thousand square feet was the, was the minimum, and we really wanted to be focused on those larger tenants.
Correct.
Um, so we have talked to a number of them. Um, they've not been utilized. I don't think we necessarily need to to change them and, and become, and, and sort of sweeten them, so to speak. Our market has been very successful, um, with, with new leases. They've been smaller leases. They've been leases that were not an economic development project. It was just, you know, companies made the decision to move here. Um, Aon is insurance company. They're moving from Buckhead to Ravinia. Um, Swiss Log was one that, that occurred earlier this year. The terraces itself has had, I think, a hundred thousand square feet of new leases um, this year. So things are getting a little bit better. Um, the market around us is, is doing just as well if, a- and so, um, AIG moved, uh, a big, you know, they signed a, a two hundred thousand square foot lease over in Brookhaven. Um, so I don't think we need to sweeten them. Um, I think we, we need to wait for the right, right tenant.
All right, so that, those incentives would work well then for our larger spaces then?
Yeah, so AIG could have, if, if, if we had space that they were looking for, and unfortunately, we did not. Um, some of the buildings that, that we wanted, they, they were looking for two hundred thousand or a hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet. Our big blocks in our nicer buildings like Ravinia and the terraces have been taken up. And so they just couldn't find space in those. Um, so I think, I think those are good to, to go to convention. I would probably rely on Discover Dunwoody to, to, to tell us if we do need more convention space. Because obviously with meetings comes more hotel rooms and more people, um, where that should be. And then what could we do? We could use the Development Authority to help finance that. You use hotel motel tax. Some of the hotel motel tax can be used for those types of things. So I would, my first question would be, do, you know, wo- would it make economic sense to, to build a convention center or to help an existing hotel expand their meeting space? I think Marriott and Crown Plaza have our largest meeting spaces.
Right.
I would think, you know, helping them expand those footprints if they think they can.
That's fine. I can, I was thinking Marta, and I was thinking High Street has a hotel rights of available to build. And if they had the opportunity to do convention space, I think it would be a win-win-win for everybody. And I was just wondering if those incentives that we already had in place helped that, but not really.
Not really. We, yeah, we would have to look at a, at a couple of different ways. Development Authority is always used, and then using the hotel motel tax, you can dedicate that to build convention space. And that's the way most of them are, are financed.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Anybody else? Thank you, Michael.
So, so just let you know, in the fourth quarter, which will be in January, we'll, we'll cover retail, uh, the perimeter market, jet ferry, and winter's chapel, so.
And do you want to briefly address the nuanced change in ribbon cuttings? So the council can be prepared.
Yes, so, so, um, during COVID, uh, we took over ribbon cuttings from, from the chamber. They were not operating in person, and they weren't conducting ribbon cutting. So the city stepped in. We thought it was important, especially for companies during COVID, actually opening their doors to support them. Um, and we continue to do that, and, and the, the chamber has, has wanted to get back in the ribbon cutting business, and it really is a Chamber of Commerce-type, um, duty. And so with this new merger between, um, the, the perimeter chamber and the Sandy Springs perimeter chamber, we thought this was the right time to, to put that back in their court. Um, we will still be involved. We, we still work with them very closely. If they do not do a ribbon cutting for a business, we will absolutely step in and support that business. Maybe not with the ribbon cutting, but with a welcome to Dunwoody. Discover Dunwoody already does a ton of marketing and P R and reels and, and everything else with restaurants and entertainment uses, even before we do the ribbon cutting. So we will still be involved. I think you all received an invite to the Element. That's a chamber ribbon cutting. So there is, there, we're, we're, we're taking a different role. So thank you.
Thank you. Rachel.
Good evening. Um, I'm continuing through our, uh, partner presentations for the annual reports. Um, tonight is Dunwoody Senior Baseball. Um, the Parks Recreation Department is proud to call Dunwoody Senior Baseball Partner. Dunwoody Senior Baseball provides high-quality baseball programming for middle-school-aged players and up through organized leagues, travel teams, clinics, and other events. They focus on the best possible baseball experience for participants, encouraging, encouraging healthy competition, actively seek feedback from participants and fans to consistently improve programs, and look for opportunities to add value to other baseball and community organizations. Here to present tonight is the President Jerry Weiner.
Thank you, Rachel. Mayor, Council, Staff. Good evening. Um, I've got with me Carlton Hamer, who's one of our Vice Presidents, and John Crawford, who's our Chief Operating Officer. I'm happy to take questions during the presentation or afterward, so just, okay. Um, as you can see on the slide, we were founded in nineteen seventy-five, which means that next year will be our fiftieth anniversary, and you know, we're making some plans to celebrate that. A very proud event for us. As Rachel said, our mission is to support recreational and travel baseball in Dunwoody and the surrounding communities for middle-school and high-school-aged players. Um, we start at age thirteen, which means our kids, uh, play at Murphy Camler, play at, uh, Morgan Falls, play at, uh, N Y O, um, up, uh, and, uh, until that time, and then all of those kids come to us because we are the only place in Atlanta where fifteen to eighteen-year-olds can play recreational baseball. Um, we're a very unique organization, as we found by doing some research, uh, not just in the Atlanta region, but throughout the country. Um, our goal is to try and run good quality programs to try and, uh, provide positive role models for these young players. Uh, and to do the best job we can of making, uh, creating a program that the city can be proud of. Um, I just want to say as a footnote, it's been a while since I've been here, uh, certainly since the, before the pandemic, and we appreciated the city allowing us to start back up, uh, in June of that year after we closed in March. Um, and to this day, we still hear from parents who thank us for giving their kids somewhere to, to go because they were probably ready to kill them by that time. Okay. Um, as you can see, our programs, um, we start with the Middle School League, um, in, uh, in late, uh, or early spring. Um, this Middle School League is one of the, if not the largest middle-school leagues in the United States. Uh, we will be having sixty teams. We will be having sixty teams this coming year, which means we've got roughly eight hundred and forty players. Again, a large program. We play on our fields as well as twenty some other other fields throughout the city. Our Spring Rec League is divided into two sub leagues, a thirteen to fifteen year old. We call it the lower league. We've got a fifteen to eighteen year old upper league, and that starts right after middle school ends and goes until about mid June. At that time, we we open up what we call our Summerwood Bat League, which is eighteen and up. We do have rising high school seniors, and we've even got some folks in their sixties and seventies playing ball in that league. We generally get about sixteen teams there, a few more guys per team in that league. But it's considered to be one of the better, more competitive leagues in the metro Atlanta area. Our Fall Rec League is very similar to our Spring Rec League. They both get upwards between twenty five and and thirty teams a year. You can see the number of players, and we're just now at the point of starting our Fall League Championships. Diablo's Travel, we absorbed the Diablo's Travel Program four years ago. That's Tom Bass, as a lot of you know, who originated that. We're very proud to have Tom as a as our chief baseball officer. We currently have two thirteen, two fourteen, and a fifteen year old team. They play, they practice at our fields, they play in tournaments around the state, and we've roughly got seventy kids playing in that league. We also run clinics year round, and we drop down to ten to eighteen year old for that. We run about, we've run between ninety five and a hundred kids through that. Clinics are one area that we're looking to grow because we hear the demand from our constituents for that. So in total, we're we're serving over two thousand players a year. Some of those are repeats, of course, if they're both playing spring and fall. But we think that's a pretty good, a pretty good run of it, and probably gives us fifteen hundred games a year that these kids play. Terms of our governance, we have a volunteer board, fifteen members, including three officers. We also have a chief operating officer, which is John. And we maintain a strategic planning process because, quite frankly, John and I especially, John's been doing it longer than I have. But both of us are in our mid seventies, and we know there's going to be a day when we can't even throw a baseball anymore, let alone do some of the things we're doing. So as we'll talk about a little bit later, one of our biggest challenges is just making sure we can get good quality leadership to continue what we think has been a pretty good run for this organization. Our employees, we're up to twenty two employees. John is a paid employee because he spends full time plus on this. We've got sixteen coaches in the Diablo program, and we've got five field managers. So if you ever come over and you see the retired guys in red shirts walking around, making sure that the garbage is picked up, making sure that people are behaving themselves. We feel it's an important part of what we offer to the community to make sure that there is some law and order, if you will. Not that these folks get too crazy, but sometimes they get overzealous about their teams. And they also, they monitor the fields, whether it's us or during our Perfect Game tournaments in the summer. And they really do provide a wonderful function for us. We also have a whole host of volunteer coaches and parents. Almost every coach that coaches in the league is a volunteer. We do provide some minor financial incentives to get some younger folks in to coach during our rec leagues. But for the most part, everybody that's doing that is a volunteer. Terms of our partnership with the city, we we are very appreciative of everything the city does for us. The fields and and the facility are well maintained. We have a really good relationship with Rachel as director of parks and the staff that takes care of just about anything we need help with. This past year, for example, we shared the cost of sunshades. I don't know if you all have had a chance to see it, but it was the single biggest non-player complaint that we had and between the city and Dunwoody Senior, we split ninety five thousand dollars of cost. We got those things up, and we've received a lot of good comments about them. We do, as we've talked about from time to time, we do need some netting along Barclay. That's an accident waiting to happen, and we are concerned because we would be liable and the city would be liable if somebody got seriously hurt. We do regularly get cars hit over there. We occasionally get somebody over at the park who gets a near miss. We've never had anybody hurt seriously, which we're thankful of. But the netting needs to get extended somehow to keep some of those balls from flying into Barclay and and over on the sidewalk at the park. We also are looking at a proposed hitting facility. This is one of the things that we don't offer, that a lot of the parks around here offer. And I've included a artist conception of what that would look like. It's in the motif of the buildings that are there. We're saving our shekels, if you will, to try and build this thing. We've talked to Eric and and staff about it and are waiting for a green light to go ahead and do more extensive planning. We figure it's going to cost us between six and seven hundred thousand, maybe a little more because everyday construction costs seem to go up. But we're in in pretty good position to fund most of that ourselves and see that we could do the fundraising to do the rest. In terms of our challenges, our our single biggest challenge is field time. As you know, we the demand for baseball for what we do in the Dunwoody area is off the charts. We are regularly every week turning people down who want to come use the fields. So anything we can do to maintain the field time we have or increase it in any way would be great. We are looking this year at starting a winter league, sort of a development league. It would be a real quick machine pitch league. And that's really, these are the only opportunities we currently have to expand our program and our revenue. And you know, our costs keep going up, which means the only way we can really cover things is by increasing fees, and we're sensitive about doing that. We try not to increase league fees fees other than every other year. But the pressure on umpire costs, we're paying fifty bucks for a dozen baseballs now. Things are expensive, as you guys know. We understand there is a proposed increase in free play for June and July that would take every third Saturday and Sunday. Quite frankly, that would cripple our summer program. That would affect thirty percent of the games that we play during the summer as we play eight games a week on Sundays. And that would pretty much eliminate our ability to do that every third week. It would also hinder our our fundraising activities as we do a good bit of that in the summertime through Perfect Game, as you guys know. And you've allowed us to do that through our usage agreement. But that would take away, we've calculated about fifteen to twenty percent of that revenue as well. So I would ask you to work with us. We are well aware of what happens at the fields now during free time. It is not Dunwoody citizens coming over to throw the ball around with their kids. It's a lot of adult soccer or other people coming from outside the Dunwoody area who come to use the fields during free time. Rachel and I have had this conversation about who's using them. We clearly have to pick up the mess that gets created, which is why we would love our field managers to be there anytime the fields are being used. Because as the primary user, we have to deal with the sunflower seeds and the broken fences. We're dealing with some issues now with the windscreen that got intentionally torn. That's going to cost about fourteen thousand dollars to fix. So we care about these fields as if they were our own. We treat them as if they're our our own. We would like the ability to work with the city. We think we can work more free time in during the normal schedule that we have, which includes during the week. And that on weekends, we don't, we're not opposed to free time on the weekends. But please understand that any increase in summertime free time is going to have a significant impact on our activities during the summer, which then translates again to our revenue. I've calculated that this would eliminate about twenty five percent of our summer gains. And that would be devastating for us. In terms of leadership and volunteers, finding the next generation, as I've said, is is the primary focus of our strategic planning process. We look at other organizations with professional management, and we want to move more in that direction. Although we think we're doing a pretty good job, having people who's like John, whose job this is day in and day out, protects the city and its facility and helps us grow these programs to the extent we can. So at the end of the day, we are very appreciative of everything the city does for us. We always invite you guys to come out to a game. Our middle school season, which will be the twenty third middle school season, starts in on February thirteenth, and we'll send you all invitations to come to that and maybe throw out a for a ball or two. Okay? Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions? Do you have any, Rob?
Yes. Maybe not necessarily a question, but a comment, kind of an observation based on the the Halloween event we had at Brook Run. Brook Run, even with the signage, still gets a lot of parking for people using the baseball fields. And maybe you could just work with the Parks Department to kind of figure out how to address that better. Especially when there are events like the Halloween event or the farmer's market or things like that. So that's, you know, just an observation that that we got there. And then just another thought for the 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 net that was mentioned along Barclay, if if you guys have a cost estimate for that. I mean, this is the first I've heard of that that's been an issue, so.
Yeah, I think we got a cost estimate. Correct me if I'm wrong, that was sixty or seventy thousand, seventy grand.
All right.
Yeah. And that would primarily solve the problem. Okay? We think that's probably the single biggest risk that come that together that we're facing over there.
Okay. Uh, John?
Thank you, Jerry, for the comments. Also very interested in the safety aspect. First time I'm hearing of the netting issue, I believe council as a whole is the first time we're hearing of it. There was an issue on North Peachtree where balls were hitting the street, and those were fixed. Rachel, was the netting on North Peachtree, was that funded by the city? Or was that funded by Dunwoody Senior Baseball?
By the city.
By the city?
By the city, yeah.
So on this, if it's a safety issue, and we're supposed to have a who's responsible for the netting, let's say on Barclay, based on the contractual agreements that we have in place, where are we at now on an issue like that if it were to be raised?
John, I don't think it's clear. But as with everything else, we've always been willing to partner with the city on this.
Okay.
We don't feel it's our sole responsibility to address it. You know, we would love, of course, for the city to take care of it. But clearly, we we see the the seriousness of the potential here, and we just want it fixed. So if that means we got.
I'll hardly agree. I'm just looking from the engineering standpoint of it that we.
Right.
We together engineered a lot of that stuff and tried to put it the fix in on the front end. And I guess it's not working.
Well, there there never really was any netting consideration over Barclay. The nets that we put up, we had requested initially that they be higher than they are, which would have cut down on some percentage of those balls, certainly the screamers, if you will, that are going over. But the cost of getting netting over there, and we've looked at, we've talked to Better Baseball and other folks that supply us about it. And about seventy grand would not eliminate the problem because you're never going to, but would substantially reduce it.
Okay, again, there was a lot of comments made by Jerry, so thank you. And I don't have any answers. I don't think council has answers to many of the issues you're raising. But we do hope that you're working with Rachel in order to have any disagreements or the issues that maximum time usage and whatever else. I don't have all the issues or the answers.
Right.
But again, when it comes to safety, there's no paramount item that comes in front of council, except for that right now.
Just so you know, I meet with Rachel via phone every other week. We go through whatever issues we've got. She's been incredibly helpful and supportive. We try not to bug you you folks because we know you've got other things to worry about. We try and take care of our own stuff, if you will, because that's just kind of how we approach life. And for the most part, I think we do. And by the way, on the parking, we 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 work very hard on that one. In fact, I've heard from the mayor before seven o'clock on a Saturday morning a few years ago. We have signs up, we get our field managers over there, and we still get some people that just don't seem to be able to read. So we continue to work on it, but I appreciate your comment.
I don't have a solution. I'm just throwing it out as kind of an ongoing issue that.
We recognize that, so thank you.
So so Jerry's, and I can send it out if y'all want to see it. So the netting on Barclay I had in as a capital request for twenty twenty five. It is, I think, the estimate was about seventy five thousand dollars. But I can share that with everybody if y'all would like that after this.
Did it make the budget?
Don't believe so.
Okay. Eric, do you know? Well, we'll get to in a second. We're getting ready to talk about the budget. Thank you. All right, Joe?
Jerry, thank thank you for your detailed report and everything. The programs you list, yeah, quite extensive, really, really awesome to see all that generated here. I I a couple of free form thoughts. You saw how our earlier Michael Starling Economic Development Director, we've got some great new technology now. I don't know if we could, this is more of a hypothetical for tonight, but hypothetical, see if there's any folks that are spending, like coming overnight, maybe they're staying in local hotels. What is, you know, economic impact of their visit?
Yeah, we, if I could address that, that would primarily be the Perfect Game, folks that come in from all over the country during the summer. I did an informal survey simply of the Georgetown area a couple of years ago and found that the merchants there were generating between one and a half and two million dollars additional revenue. It's not hard. You go in, you say, do you ever see baseball players in the summer? And they go, oh, yeah, because they're easy to identify. And they come in, and I asked about how much they spend and about how often you see them. So I just did a little quick scratch, and that was the number I came up with. How accurate it is, I don't know. But we do did try to work with Discover Dunwoody on hotel arrangements. We put them in touch with Perfect Game, and to be honest with you, we didn't have any luck on this end. So any encouragement you could give those folks to work with Perfect Game and work with us. We are very intent on trying to bring business. I know it's not our goal, but it does help, and it may not raise a whole lot of tax revenue, but it does keep those folks in business.
Yeah, yeah. I got like a couple more. On the the total number of players, I'm assuming that they have like two thousand and fifteen. Some that's got, are those some of those duplicate?
Yes, as I mentioned, some of them play in multiple programs.
If the possible for a future report to try to pull up the metrics of where those people, you know, how many are there? Dunwoody residents, are they, you know, where they have they adjacent? I know we get a little bit of that detail, like, for instance, from Spruill Art Center. They kind of give us some, at least from the region and the neighboring cities.
Happy to do that. But again, keep in mind, our kids go to Murphy Camler and Sandy Springs, et cetera, before they reach thirteen. And then we get all those kids here. So then I've looked at those numbers before. I don't have them offhand, but we're capable of doing that. We have zip codes and all that of everybody. So I'll I'll get you that information.
And then just a completely wild one, not out in your wheelhouse. But when I grew up, wait, well, years ago, I grew up in Michigan. And when I worked in malls and when they were closed earlier on Sundays, we had a mall rec recreational softball league. Oh, cool. Recreational adult softball league, right? And you talk about free play and and limited hours. Just open this up for future conversations, just conceptually. It's nothing to do with baseball, nothing to do with whatever, but just going out and having fun.
Yep.
And I'm I'm not a competitive guy. I haven't swung a bat in years. But if there was an opportunity a couple of times a year to just go out and have fun with some folks and play a little easy, slow pitch, underhand, whatever, you know, softball coed thing, have fun, I'd be totally up for that. You know, whether it's just a special event or just for having fun or fundraiser, whatever.
And we're sensitive to that, which is why we think we can work with you to come up with good free time, free play time during during the entire year, but especially during the summer. And again, we have a pretty good handle on who's using the fields during free time, and it's not people like you. And I would mention that we've taken the age limit off of our Summerwood Bat League, so please sign up if you want.
Maybe I need to have a little coaching first. That was putting me on the left field, so there you go. All right, anyway, thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Harris?
Um, okay, going back to the two thousand participants, how many of those are girls?
We have a few girls. The issue Stacy, we deal with is that at this age, younger, there's, they're probably physically competitive. We we try to recruit girls to these teams. Our middle school program has girls in it, but we don't get a whole lot of girls in the fifteen to.
And I I understand that. So I also know that you were asked, and you guys have been working with the Peachtree Girls Softball Team to allow I, because you have, please continue to do that. I will continue to monitor that, and I will continue to make sure that it's done and that our Peachtree Girls Softball Team has access to those fields. And then our Peachtree Girls Softball Team has access to those fields.
Yes, and we and we are, we've always been supportive of softball. John coached girls softball over at Murphy Camler for years. We believe that this is an important component of the recreational equation.
Okay, I understand that. With all due respect, we had to make you accommodate the girls softball. And I'm glad you are and I'm glad you're going to continue to do it. And I'm glad you to hear you publicly say that you support girls softball. So moving on. Rachel, this is a question for you. On the the Sundays in November, what do we have in the what are on the the are the baseball fields, on the fields?
M A B L.
Which is?
It's the men's adult baseball league.
Okay, and so they just use it on Sundays in November and they've done that for a couple of years now or, okay. So, okay, and that is how many, how many, like, what does that league look like and what do they do? Just.
I say you actually probably know. Yeah, Jerry probably knows the details. We have primarily, it's November. And then I think the first weekend in December, Sundays, ten to seven, I believe, are their facility usage hours.
Okay, cool. So that's just a very limited, they just come in, okay.
Stacy, they're an organization based in Cobb County and most, none of the teams are based in Dunwoody. We know those folks, they're good folks, but if the fields here are primarily for use of Dunwoody and the Dunwoody Partner Organizations, we would request that you reduce the amount of time they take from us on Sundays in November.
Understood. And I guess going back to just for the rest of council, because you guys haven't seen the user agreements, what we're asking, and we'll see it next month is that the free time, because there've been some conflicts, that the free play on the fields will match no organized activity in Brook Run Park on the third weekend every month. It's the rest month, it's the rest weekend. So I understand that you you know, you see people from out of Dunwoody coming into play during our free play. But the fact of the matter is, you would put a tournament on the fields with out of town people as well. So that's kind of what we're trying to do is have, be able to have established, everybody knows that the third weekend of every month, it is open play in both Book Run and the and on the Dunwoody Senior Baseball Fields. Just kind of letting council know that. But for Dunwoody Senior, I want to make sure that that Dunwoody Senior is uses our, Rachel, what's the name of our Civic Plus? Our city calendar is the master calendar. That whatever's on the city calendar is the master calendar. So if we have free play, it is free play. Because I know we got an email not too long ago, maybe over the summer, where a father and son had showed up to free play according to our city calendar. And in fact, you all had a game. So we need to make sure and you need to make sure your chief operating officer knows that your calendar has to match the city's calendar, because the city's calendar rules.
Yeah, with all due respect, we work very closely with Kate. John deals with her on a regular basis. And if that's the incident I was thinking about, that was not one of our games.
I understand that. I'm telling, I'm just asking and pleading with you to make sure that the calendar from Dunwoody Senior Baseball is a hundred percent correct on the city's calendar. The city's calendar is the master one. So please make sure that the Dunwoody Senior one, so that Kate knows when, if we, if if we can get more rental income, she needs to make sure that you're not on the fields. She she shouldn't have to pick up the phone and call. She needs to know that.
That's how we operate. We do not have the the issues you just mentioned. I'm sorry, we do not. John works with Kate regularly. And do we occasionally make a mistake in terms of not paying for something we scheduled? Yeah, but in terms of using the field when they're not ours, we're very sensitive about that.
I would encourage you to please make that a hundred percent all the time.
We do.
Okay, again. And then I would also, like, you know, I I would just ask in the next report that we see, you're alluding to lost revenue and this and the other. We don't have a financial statement. So I, you know, I don't know what twenty five percent of lost revenue is. There there's no financial statement in your report that you gave us.
We send us financials to the city every quarter as required by our usage agreement.
But the report that you're in front, that you have in front of us tonight doesn't have financials.
I I brought that information with me anticipating your question. I'm happy to share any of that. But I felt that the program that we're offering and some of the non-financial issues were more important to discuss tonight.
So if you could maybe send that to us, that would be great.
Well, you have it. We sent you the, we've, every quarter, we send you a balance sheet and income statement.
Okay, Rachel, if you could forward those to us, that would be great. And then of this, the proposed batting facility, just kind of, I would kind of like to hear how you see that working. Just, I mean, since this is kind of the first we're hearing about it and and seeing in front of us, how how do you see that working and control and access?
Well, clearly, if we spend the money to build it, we'd like to own the asset. And part of the issue we've asked Eric and staff about is how do we do that? I know there are other arrangements with, for example, the Nature Center. And what we'd like is some understanding about if we build this facility, what kind of risk are we at with respect to our operating agreement. So we're asking for longer operating agreement. As a result, we see that facility being used by all of our teams. And, you know, we do look to raise revenue out of that facility. So if it were to be made available to non-Dunwoody senior people during times we're not using it, we would still want to have a charge to use that facility because it's going to be expensive to build and maintain. And again, we're looking for ways we can grow our program. And we don't have a whole lot of additional field time to do that with. So things like the sitting facility and the clinics that we're doing are really the only options we've got at this time.
Okay.
And I appreciate your understanding on that.
Yeah, okay. I just kind of wanted to hear you like spitball like your vision of it. So thank you.
No, it's it's something that everybody else has. And we get a lot of questions about it, but we know it's going to get used pretty extensively.
Okay, all right, thank you.
In fact, in fact, softball would be able to use it as well. We've intentionally designing it with that in mind.
Anybody else?
Where where physically would that be cited?
All right, so you know where that big dirt thing is that was originally going to be a playground for little kids coming to watch Big Brother and Sister Play Ball? It's designed to fit on that spot, a little bit wider. So it'd be really right behind the current field house. And you know where the concession stand is? If you got your coke and you turned around, you'd bump into it.
Rachel, can you do me a favor and put the presentation back up, please? Is that an IT question? Okay, I'll just ask you, okay. All right, can you go to maybe the first page? So go back up. So I think it's, this is the last page. Yeah. Maybe the overview. I think it says overview. I'm pointing to it like I can change it. Yes. So I want to ask a question that I've asked every organization in Dunwoody that has ever stood before me since I was on council when they come talking about facility improvements, which is, is your mission driving the vision for more facilities or is your vision for more facilities based on something else?
No, it's our mission is to provide recreational baseball to middle and high school students. And to the extent that we don't have enough field time or enough hitting facility to do that, those those are the reasons that we do these things.
And do you have a waitlist for your rec programs? Or if you could go to the page that showed all your programs? I'm not operating off an iPad tonight, so I can't.
Typically, no waitlist because we find a way to get everybody who signs up into the program.
So for your biggest program, which looks to be the middle school league with sixty teams, I presume that they're playing at other places besides Dunwoody, correct? And are there feel, like, when you program out the season? And I don't, let's make up, you know, team A and B are Dunwoody teams. And X, Y, Z are not, but they have feel, access to fields or X, Y, Z fields being used as often as our fields?
Number one priority is to use our fields.
Okay.
Okay, because we do give them field credit when we use those.
Okay, I see. Okay. All right, so I think we'll wait for staff to make a recommendation on the improvement you'd like to make at your expense. During the budget process, we can potentially talk about the safety issue and where we are and why we are where we are, or whatever that looks like. But you can continue to work with staff. I mean, I don't think anybody objects to them working more with staff on the batting cage thing. That's what it is. It's, well, I mean, maybe it has a different name. Right? So I think we can safely say that we'd like, Eric, you continue working. It may not be possible. I don't know all the rules and everything, but just continue working with staff and bring it to us, Eric, if there's questions for council.
No worries.
All right, thank you for the work you do for our community.
Thank you. Go for other support.
Is that it, everybody? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next is the, oh, no, it's a public hearing. Okay. It looks like a Christmas. Oh, is it the World Series? Oh, dear. Sorry. Okay. Richard, this is a long report. Just kidding.
Yes, yes.
Right.
I can, I do plan on going faster than last time, yes.
Okay, please. All right, whenever you're ready to start.
Sure. So this is the second and public hearing for the twenty twenty five budget. Real quickly, back the background, we've budgeted to use fund balance for the last three years. We have not used it. And we continue to closely monitor twenty twenty four. The current budget has a slight use of fund balance as it stands right now. As we were building the twenty twenty five budget, we had two guiding parameters that we used to minimize minimize the use of fund balance within the general fund. And to keep the projected general fund balance at the end of the year at six months reserve, which is two months higher than the four month minimum. Quick calendar, we started this process in July, had department review team meetings in August, published the proposed city manager mayor's budget in August, work session in September. And then we've had two public hearings, first one October fifteenth and this one tonight. Couple of the assumptions that we'll go through that are included in the budget, modest revenue growth, a pay increase that takes effect July first. Full year of the pay increases that took effect this year, six point five percent health insurance increase, twelve percent increase in general liability insurance. And then fully funding all these additional staff that have been approved this year. Four police positions, a fleet manager and the four public safety ambassadors. Also included in this budget are two positions that have previously been funded with ARPA dollars within HR and Economic Development. All of the municipal contracts and right away in parks maintenance contracts are funded. And then the debt service payments for City Hall, the Vermont properties are funded as well. What is not funded in the budget is any changes to retirement. We've often compared ourselves to other municipalities. That is one area where some municipalities might offer slightly higher benefit contribution to retirement there. And we had eight additional personnel requests, seven of them within the police department as part of the Barry Dunn recommendation and then a budget slash management analyst. Those are not funded currently in this budget. And a note there that we'll continue to monitor possible conversion to contract positions throughout the year. And when the timing is right, financially, we'll bring it before council as well. So this year, we did a budget enhancement request kind of in three categories, same service level enhancements and one time requests. We had a total of about two point eight million dollars in requests, funding about one point three and one point five are not included in the budget this year. Same low service level was about eight hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars in requests. And all of those are budgeted, bulk of those for fall in four departments, facilities, parks, police and public works. For the enhancement, for the expanded service level, so this is above and beyond their base budget, if you want to use that word. Seven hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars in requests. Let's see, fifty four thousand, almost fifty five thousand was included and seven hundred and thirty two thousand was not included. Where it was included was for community development, human resources, IT, parks and police. Then finally, we had one time request of nine hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, two hundred and thirteen thousand are included. Seven hundred and forty two thousand were not included in the budget, community development. For the, so the fully funding the comp plan update and code rewrite, and then human resources have the remaining thirteen thousand. Couple of slides on headcount. So the current budget, twenty twenty four budget, I should say, has a hundred and fifteen heads budgeted. Twenty twenty five has a hundred and twenty eight headcount funded. Those were for IT positions that were converted to from contract to city positions. And then the nine police positions that we talked about earlier in the presentation. So those total the thirteen ads in the twenty twenty five budget. To to add a point of comparison, so to speak, so we know we've got the hundred and twenty eight employees that we're budgeting for the city. The contract employees play a very important role in a lot of the services that city delivers. We've got about sixty seven contract positions that we're funding with this budget, with the majority of them being the parks and right away maintenance at thirty or about half of them roughly. And you can see the rest of this breakout there. So in total, when you factor in the city and the contract heads, it's about a hundred and ninety five positions that are funded in this budget. So the all funds summary, general fund, which will spend the majority of this rest of the presentation on, is increasing about six point six percent. We have a couple of special revenue funds. Those are funds, let's see, I think we've got seven of them. Those are funds that can only be used for a particular purpose. For example, E nine one one revenue can only be used to fund E nine on E nine one one operations, things of that nature. And then we've got four or three, four, four capital funds, SPOST one and SPOST two. SPOST one ended in twenty twenty four and SPOST two picked back up in April of twenty twenty four. So twenty twenty five is the first full year of SPOST two funding. We've got the general capital project fund. That's one that we really lack better word, save up our our funds as we're on a pay as you go method for capital funding. Save up all our funding and then we'll spend it when we have the funds, all the funds available. So that's why you'll see a use of fund balance there, for example. And then we've got the debt service fund that talks, that funds the debt that we talked about earlier. And finally, stormwater utility. And that stormwater fund can only be used, obviously, stormwater related costs. So we're focused on the general fund here and going to revenue. So the twenty twenty four budget has thirty three point, almost thirty four million dollars in revenue. The proposed budget for twenty twenty five is thirty five point seven. So that's about a two point four percent increase in revenue. However, expenditures are increasing from thirty four point seven to about thirty seven million. So that's a six point seven percent increase in expenditures. That's a trend that we've seen. Now, this is the second year in a row that we've seen a trend like this where expenditure growth is higher than revenue growth. At the end of this year, we're forecasting months of unassigned fund of balance to be about nine months. And at the end of twenty twenty five, we're proposing eight months fund balance. To keep that in perspective, six, the fund balance above six months above the reserve that we are working toward is about eight point seven million dollars at the end of twenty twenty four and about six point three million dollars at the end of twenty twenty five. So revenue, these are the major categories that we track. And why mainly wanted to show this is to show that we are forecasting some level of growth in the majority of the revenue categories. For example, property taxes, we have a three percent increase in the net digest there. And then you can track through Hotomoto where we have a three percent increase, same with motor vehicle rental tax, about three point, three percent increase. So that's what's leading to the two point four percent increase in revenue. We are funding twenty twenty four with a one time transfer in from ARPA two of about a little bit over a million dollars. And in the twenty twenty five budget, we have about a two million dollar transfer in from ARPA two as well. So we're going to look at general fund expenditures in two ways, by department and also by function. So this is by department. First thing that jumps out is that police is almost forty percent of the twenty twenty five proposed proposed budget. It's about thirty eight point six percent. The four largest departments, IT, police, public works and parks is about seventy percent of the total budget. And debt service is about three point eight percent and capital one time expenditure is about two points, two percent. So that leaves the remaining departments all about twenty four point four percent of the budget. So what you see there is again, a six point seven percent increase in recurring expenditures year over year is what we are budgeting. By category, it it shows a couple of things. So personnel costs that are city related are five fifty one point. By category, it, it shows a couple of things. So personnel costs that are city related are 51.3% of the budget. Plus the official admin services is our contractors, uh, that's where they're budgeted. So that's 9.3. So when you put those two together, personnel costs are about 60, almost 61% of the total 2025 budget. Uh, some other things, property and liability insurance and debt service is about 5.8% of the budget. And then the remaining categories are about $11.3 million or 33.6% of the budget. And we did, since repairs and maintenance can be such a large category, we, we tried to separate that out a little bit to show the traditional repairs and maintenance, as well as the parks and right away maintenance, and then a lot of the IT maintenance agreements as well, just to show the continued year-over-year increase that we're seeing in a lot of those contracts. Just a couple of slides on the capital plan, uh, Hotomoto. We've got two projects that we're continuing to fund there, about 946,000 for the phase two of Ashford Dunwoody multi-use path, and then 125,000 for trailway finding signage. And SPOST one, as we said, collections ended March of 2024 for that. Uh, there is good news there. We, um, ended up collecting about $47 million in total in SPOST one. We had budgeted to use about $43 million. So in this budget, we're going to put that additional $4 million to work. And those are the projects there, 2.6 million to transportation, 1.1 million of it to public safeties and $236,000 to facilities, repairs and maintenance. That's how we're divvying it up based on how the referendum was approved. We are differing those, that $4 million in collections above budget like that. SPOST two started in April of 2024, so 2025 will be the first year of SPOST two collections. Couple of projects to highlight, 207, two, I'm sorry, 2.75 million plus another 500K approximately in O-Meg. So all of that will go toward re, road resurfacing. We did spread the $2 million for the Shambly Dunwoody Bridge over 2025 to 2029. Put in 800,000 for the Shambly Dunwoody corridor, and then 160 for ADA sidewalk ramp upgrades and 86,000 for school flasher remote monitoring. So those are transportation related projects within SPOST two. Public safety, SPOST two projects include 700,000 for nine police replacement vehicles and 425,000 for police equipment. And then last, within the general capital project fund, about 220,000 for IT needs. We tried to budget about $100,000 each year for new laptops and desktops. And then, and then about 120,000 every year or every other year for host and sands and things like that, that our IT department needs. And then the $600,000 for a general capital repair and improvements, we had set aside $3 million of the Schallerford proceeds, five, uh, $600,000, uh, over five years, and this would be year three of those, uh, proceeds there. And then the final slide is just, uh, some future considerations. So we've got, uh, a number that's not all encompassing, I would say, but we do have a number of items that are funded with ARPA two in the 2025 budget that we would look to, uh, identify additional funding sources, most likely within the general fund. If we are going to continue these items beyond 2025, for example, the four police positions are funded for, with ARPA two this year and for 2025. Same with the civilian fleet manager, the co-responder program, and, uh, the additional EMS both have funding through 2025 and ARPA two. And then safe streets, uh, related, um, both the position and construction have funding through 2025 within ARPA two as well. And I believe that is all. Be happy to answer any questions.
How do you have questions? Do we want to talk about the baseball net? Oh, public hearing thing. Is there anyone here? So with, is there any objection to opening the public hearing? Seeing none, I open the public hearing. Um, is there anyone here to speak for the budget? We'll have 10 minutes for each side. Uh, approach the microphone. If you'd like to speak for it, uh, seeing no one approaching, I will ask if anyone would like to speak against the budget. We'll have 10 minutes for the against side. Seeing none, um, I close this public hearing unless there's an objection. Um, Richard can probably come up. Uh, does anybody have any questions now? The baseball net, Eric, can we talk about the baseball net during this budget process?
Absolutely. So the baseball net, although it's not in the current budget, there are funds which I could reallocate for usage in there. As you know, this budget was a no frills budget, didn't have any extra, um, stuff in it, and that would be an extra enhancement. So therefore that's not in there, but you do have proceeds from the Schallerford sale that you could use for that.
Can we split it with them?
Well, my, my question is, we have how much 300, 3 or 600,000 from 600, right?
600, yes.
And that's just for repair and maintenance. I mean, can we, could we not draw out of that?
We can work with Rachel to, to, uh, prioritize all the, the projects that they want to do, and that can be one of the projects that we certainly prioritize with those funds. Yes.
And I would, I would look at that. And one thing I'll say on the baseball field, I mean, it's not a, it's not a unique problem to Dunwoody. Fields all over the area, balls do fly out. I'm not saying it's good or bad. It just does happen. It's part of the sport, similar to a golf course for that matter, where you have balls that come out. So from that standpoint, I, I think it's whatever priority y'all want to say it is. If you want to say it's a top priority to do it, we can certainly look at that.
I think maybe y'all should come back to us with a recommendation of where it ranks as a priority. And I also think just like we split things with the nature center board and the Dunwoody Preservation Trust. Help me out, whatever staged or sprawl, it would be wise to split this with them. Go ahead, John.
I'll hardly agree with everything you're saying. More important to me, it's not really the money that we're going to find the money to fix this. More importantly is that this wasn't brought to us. And to me, I see that as a detriment, that this was a possible safety issue that the organization raised to the city, but the city or nobody else brought it to city councils' attention so that we could address this. I see that as a shortcoming. To me, that's the important thing here, and I think that's, that needs to be fixed in the future. Is there anything else in the budget that would be deemed a safety factor that wasn't brought up? I mean, it's just, Eric, this is, you see where I'm coming with this.
Yeah. And, and that's, and that's all, that becomes a judgment call as far as what's a safety issue or isn't. But yes, I see what, I see your point. We can look at that. We have both Jays here as well as Richard. I don't know how we can ask them as well. There's any safety issues that they think that are, uh, apparent. We do go through the budget very cautiously with all the department heads to make sure if there's any, uh, priority type issues that those are funded, are at least brought to the council. Like I said, this, this issue, I understand where you are coming from with it.
I guess, John, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with you that I feel like for this to come up, it's getting in the weeds, you know, that, um, if it's not this and it's something else and it's something else. So I would just like, I'm trusting Rachel's judgment, judgment as to whether or not to push it or not. So I guess from my point of view, it's not necessarily something that had been front and center to us, but part of the budget process, and I trust that it was.
I guess I see where you're coming from on that. But again, if there were funds that were requested, for example, sidewalk repairs. If there's a, a broken sidewalk and it gets reported to us, we are on the hook to fix it because if somebody trips afterwards, breaks a leg, that's a lawsuit ready to happen. This was reported to us and wasn't raised to a financial issue to where we should be addressing it. That's all I'm saying. I, I, I look at it from a, from a liability, from a safety and financial, and all three of those are our responsibility to hear about and to fix if at all possible. So that's, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I hope you see my point.
So my, my personal thought for this is, I don't know how ripe this issue is for resolution, but certainly not right now. We have a budget as is.
Right.
My recommendation would be go as is.
Yeah.
Let's figure out what's needed, what it's going to cost, how it's going to break down, and then we can talk about how we might address it and when we might address it.
That's fine.
I mean, we're, we're in the wants versus needs right now, and if we had to start from scratch, and if we didn't have any money, if we didn't have a legacy of a 50-year-old organization here, we would not be starting and standing up that type of activity right now. Right? We're, we're, we're a deficit spending city right now anyway. So, um, we can't change the past, but I, I, I definitely would have a separate conversation on this in future.
I move to approve the 2025 budget.
I will second that motion.
Move by Councilman Harris, second by Councilman Price. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously of those that are here. Thank you, Sharon. All right, Sharon, are you ready for us to keep going? All right, next up is consent. Uh, we've already amended the agenda and moved six to business. Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Move by Councilman Price.
Second.
By Councilwoman Harris. Any further discussion or questions on these two items? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the item carries unanimously. Rachel is back when, and I don't think Sharon, you had to read this one because it's not a resolution. Just come on up and start.
For, for tree.
Tree top, yes.
Yes. So I can pull up the presentation from last time if you'd like, uh, from the website or if you have questions, happy to answer those.
Uh, I think we probably have a couple of questions. Does anybody want to start or you want me to start? Go ahead, Rob.
I'll, I'll start just with the obvious one that was raised, uh, in an email from a citizen earlier today. About the Dunwoody discount not being well-publicized. I don't, I, I just have the email I've got. I haven't done my own independent research. It came in rather late in the day. But if you have thoughts on if Treetop Quest is adequately letting citizens know they get 10% off.
So they're not, um, and I've, I talked to them after our last meeting. Um, they did just undergo a, a website renovation. They, they did promise it would, it would be on there. Um, and they were able to let me know that, um, a little over 1,500 residents have used it. Uh, so I don't know if that's folks calling in or what have you, but it definitely would be easier on the website. And, um, I'll follow up with them and once that's remedied, I'll definitely let you know. Yep.
Okay, so children are mischievous. Teens are worse than that sometimes. They make poor choices.
Yes.
Do you have any insights into how they got their hands on harnesses, um, last week? At Treetop?
So I don't, um, my discussions with Treetop were they did an internal audit, um, because that was my first question is, because everything, that, that trailer they have, everything gets locked up. That's, that's protocol when they're done with the session. Um, everything harnesses, all that gets, gets in there. So that was my first question for the same reason. And they did an internal audit and they spoke to all their staff, um, and they assured me that that was not something that, um, staff would have left behind. They, they suspected, I'm not sure how we would, um, confirm that, but maybe they were, um, grabbed earlier in the day by the same children. Um, again, we don't, unfortunately, we, we don't know. Um, we're very, yes, I, I hate what happened, but we're very lucky that the kids weren't hurt, obviously. But, um, and I do know it's, I don't know what, my cannon cannot speak to, but I do know that their, uh, tree tops in touch with police on filing charges and that sort. Yep.
Okay. And you're comfortable and confident that they clean up every day?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does anybody else have other questions? And it's, by the way, the discount is still not on their webpage that I can see. Okay. Go ahead.
That was on the website. It's not there. There's no discount on the website as far as I can tell. But I wanted to know as far as the incident that just occurred, was there any financial cost to the city of Dunwoody for the response for any aspect of the incident that happened?
There wasn't on the park side. I'm not sure if, if there is anything on the police side. I'm getting a nod, no.
Right.
No.
Okay, I could, I'm disappointed that it happened. I'm not seeing them coming up. This was on the agenda. They knew about it. I have not seen anything from Treetop Quest, uh, discussing it, telling us what happened, an apology, an action plan to make sure that things won't happen again. It's in their contract not to let this stuff happen. I'm disappointed and I'm not sure, again, with the not following the little rules of the contract, the 10% discount. If you're not following the little rules, how should I know that you're not following the big rules of safety? So again, we now have two little issues which might be contractual, but yet today you're asking us to renew a five-year contract with them. So it's.
If you want to come up.
I, I guess I'm going to respectfully disagree with you, John. With all due respect, the teenagers were committing a crime. Like, this was not the fault of Treetop Quest. It was the fault of teenagers making poor choices.
I haven't seen the report, so I don't know exactly.
So maybe he wants to come up and address it.
The, uh, the juveniles actually stated that they found one harness at the base of a tree is the, the story that they did tell us. A lot of response from the D.C.A.F. fire because they had, you know, obviously they were suspended up there. Uh, we have filed a formal juvenile complaint form for them for trespassing on the property afterwards. So that was their story, whether it's true or not.
Wait, weren't there two harnesses involved?
Uh, we saw one in the.
Oh, so they used the same harness?
I only saw one in the report.
Oh, there was only one kid up there? I misunderstood. Maybe we should get a copy of something.
Two kids were out there, but.
Only one was up. Okay, I missed. I just knew, whatever. Maybe in the future, when something is so high visible, has so much visibility, we should probably get some kind of report or summary. Just so we're clear
Absolutely.
on what happened. I, I believe that the ultimate people responsible for this are the 13-year-olds. But I also think that Rachel needs to make sure that Treetop is honoring its commitment to us. Both in the form of their discount, and that should have been fixed two weeks ago when we asked about it. And in fact, I would recommend we defer the contract until this gets fixed. And, uh, make, just making sure they clean up. But we can't, as a society, let kids off for their, for choices. I mean, we can understand that their brains are not fully developed, but when you go up and then harness the wrong direction in something that's clearly closed, we're lucky that the only consequence was a write-up to the juvenile court and nothing much more serious. And, um, there was a huge response. I presume that people peeled off as they were not needed. So, okay.
To be approved today?
No, we're not going to approve it today. I mean, I have to recommend. It's a business item. But so we have to, what's the language we, well, I can't get.
Deferring to the next meeting, is that?
There's a special, uh, it needs to, to defer table is what I.
I think you've got enough people that it's not really a deferral, but I think it's a motion to table until the next meeting, if that's when you'd like to have it made.
I moved to table, um, item number six, the Treetop Quest Dunwoody renewal until the November 12th meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you. And how would you, sorry, how would you like me to present that at the 12th meeting as a back in action or do you?
Business, business, yeah, not consent.
Okay.
Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
All right. Is Todd is here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We, uh, I'm here tonight, um, to talk about a recurring on-call service, um, that we, we need to support our construction projects, our ongoing construction projects around the city. Uh, we were looking, seeking to approve, uh, our unit price contracts for construction materials testing and environmental and geotechnical services. We, uh, posted a, our request for qualification a couple of months ago, um, received those, uh, those bids, packages uh, about a month ago and have since performed a qualification-based evaluation and selection. And as a result of that, you'll see on the, on the back of the memo, a, a list of the firms that responded, their corresponding, uh, averages in rank order. Based on that evaluation, we're recommending that three firms be, uh, selected, uh, Nova Engineering and Environmental, uh, Geo-Hydro Engineering and United Consulting, and they'll be providing, uh, engineer, uh, construction material testing, environmental services on an as-needed basis for our capital projects. And, um, I think that's probably it unless there are any questions.
Anybody have questions on this one?
I'm just curious because I guess I, I'm, I'm not a, uh, engineer. What exactly do they do? Like if, give me, I guess, give me a, a real world example, please.
So, uh, when we have a, when we're doing Georgetown, um, typically we have, we're pouring a lot of concrete. So we'll sample concrete on about every hundred cubic yards that's placed. We'll, we'll do a sampling and pull cylinders that we'll test to make sure that that concrete is coming up to strength. And it's, you know, it's critical for the quality assurance as well as, uh, protecting our infrastructure, particularly like back and also doing density tests on backfill, uh, to make sure that the, uh, that they're, they're meeting the criteria in our roadways and backfilling storm and that sort of thing. We also have some, there's some services we've asked for in terms of, uh, Sue as well that we'll have it with. We also have some, there's some services we've asked for in terms of, uh, Sue as well that we'll have it with, uh, one of the firms that will allow us some flexibility to be able to, uh, do some underground utility location in, in a prompt manner to be able to help us keep, keep projects moving along.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Is this okay for consent? Okay, consent. All right, Michael Starling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight I'm presenting a proposal to, uh, install our first large scale sculpture, um, as part of a public works project. Um, we've done sculptures in, uh, Brook Run, but this is the first one outside of Brook Run. Uh, very excited. 1% of the Georgetown Gateway Project was dedicated to public art that produced about $65,000. The Art Commission put together and our, uh, request for proposal, we received 28 submissions. A team from the Art Commission as well as, um, resident citizens, uh, from Dunwoody whittled that down to three, and then we finally got to the top one and the Art Commission approved that at their September 4th meeting. Um, this is the general location, um, sort of in the bend of the road there in, uh, in, along Georgetown. That was an area that we had a little bit more, uh, um, space for it, and we thought it fit nicely in, in that location. It didn't impede anybody's, um, the visuals, um, for anyone. So, uh, this is a rendering of the art. Um, as you can see, it's a little over eight feet tall. It was produced, um, by, uh, an artist from Poland, Struzik. Um, he specializes in public sculptures, um, and using light, um, with those sculptures. The dandelions, uh, that you can see there are, are fairly famous. He, he's got them outside, uh, he's got them in Kuala Lumpur, uh, I think Washington and a number of other places. And that's sort of what drew the Art Commission members to it, but we wanted something specific and different. Um, and he went back and produced, um, the art. He calls it human interfusion. And as he explains, it's, it's, it's four people, looks like two people, but it's really four people standing together. And it will be lit, um, from, from the base. Again, it's, uh, the, the price is $55,000. We do have 65 in the budget, so we've got a little bit of money to, in case we go over. And we will bring back a contract, uh, and a budget for you at a, at a later meeting. We hope to get this done by early, late spring of, of next year. Struzik is based in Poland, so, um, he will create the art, ship it and install it here, um, for us. So very excited. The Art Commission is excited and so, um, not sure which meeting, but hopefully before the end of the year, we'll bring this back. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, uh, Joe, Joe, Rob, go ahead.
So I, I'm very excited too. I, I like the idea of more art in the city. I'm going to ask you a practical question, especially since we just got done talking about tree top quest, which is I'm hoping this is going to be sturdy enough if a teenager decides to do pull ups on it, that it won't pull down.
Yes, we, he, 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 the, the artist, um, joined us at a, at an Art Commission meeting. Um, and he, he doesn't speak English, so he had the person who works for him translate. He's very familiar with, with sculptures in public areas and it absolutely will be strong and excellent for, for someone if they choose to climb it, uh, to climb it. It will be a little more difficult, I think, um, to get up it, but yes.
I, I, that was just, I, I saw this and it kind of came to mind. I'm like, somebody's going to turn new calls on that.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
John.
Michael, go back to the presentation. You gave two different visuals that didn't match in my eyes. Sophie, I don't know if it's easy to get back there. What I'm looking at, it's four people. It's a crisscross type. What are the visuals from the street, from the angles? In other words, if you're looking at it from one direction, what does it look like?
It, it's really the, the identical pieces are, are id, uh, all identical and they just spread out. The, the, the photo to the, to the right doesn't show, um, their metal bars, I guess, going up and down, and that will catch the light. If you see the, the one, um, here, you, you can, you can sort of see how the light changes and shifts underneath it. Um, we will be able to change the light as well. We, we will control the light boxes. So if we want to do green for St. Patrick's Day, we can do that.
I guess I'm looking at it from the angle of the street where most people are going to be looking at it. You're going to be moving when you see it.
Yes.
And when you go back, uh, one shows a stop right there. So you're going to see it on a curve.
Yep.
The next photo you show it, it's going to be on a straight. I don't know. I'm just looking at it. Is it going to be on the street version or is it going to be?
I, I do not know that, uh, he.
I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, he hasn't told us like which, I mean, here he has one of the, I guess the arms coming out towards the street. We can certainly talk to him about which direction.
I'm just trying, I'm, again, I'm not an artist. I'm just asking questions for visuals in the future. What is it going to look like? I'm trying to understand it, but it's all good to me.
Yeah.
Uh, again, I'm just, but yeah, I'm trying to understand it. Does that make sense?
We, we, we may get, uh, we may get Struzik to, to join us at, at the next meeting, although he's in Poland, so it's.
I'm sure it'll be beautiful. Thank you. Just trying to understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, um, thanks for adding the lighting there, Michael.
Yes.
Do we also have a little attribution, maybe a little side plaque with the artist's name or a QR code?
Yeah, there, we, the, the Art Commission talked about that a lot. So we're going to design, uh, some type of, 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 of plaque to either put on the art itself or
Just adjacent to it.
Next to it, yes.
Yeah.
And, um, that'll be something we can use with all the art that we do in the future.
Did we? Yeah, I did, because that might be retroactively, I don't know if we did one at the mosaic. At Womack, which would be, you know.
To go back.
With a Q, not to micromanage, but like with a QR code to let people learn about the website.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Um, I'm still holding out for lighting, night lighting at that mosaic as well. We'll make, but we'll see. Thanks. I'm excited to see it. And if the guy, is he actually going to come here personally for Poland?
He'll come with his team and they will install it.
So whenever that happens.
Like have a lot of publicity, right?
I hope I'm in town. I hope we can.
We will know well in advance.
That'd be awesome.
And stay in at Dunwoody Hotel, right?
Right.
Of course.
Yeah, thank you. Take him out for dinner, Mr. Discover Dunwoody.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up is Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is an agreement with Flock. Um, since we got our Flock OS, uh, platform running for our real time crime center, we have to be able to, um, hook our computer automated dispatch through the real time crime center. So in order to do this, we had to come up with an agreement with Flock. I worked with, uh, uh, City Attorney Ken and, uh, the city attorney to, uh, to get this done. So all it is is just, um, uh, we need approval for us to move forward with this agreement so we can put our computers run through our real time crime center.
Hold on, go ahead, Stacy.
It was kind of hard and, and my iPad was coming up. So again, kind of real world. So this is allowing agreement with Flock to allow our in-car police computers to talk to the real tric, real time crime center through Flock.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Is there a cost?
Which I could explain it like that, but yes.
Right. Is there a cost?
No cost.
Okay.
Is all a part of, we already pay for the.
Okay, that's.
This is just literally giving permission.
Okay. And why do I need, why do we need to approve this? I mean, I'm just asking, because it's beyond administrative, Ken, is that why? Why do we need to approve? I mean, like why is, I mean, it's fine to approve it. It's no big deal. I'm just not sure why. I'm just curious. I should have asked before. Yeah.
Reason why it's got to be approved by y'all. So it goes on your minutes, but it has circumstances in the contract language, which Eric can't waive.
Okay.
We negotiated a long time on this and pushed Flock as far as we could. Like there are limits on liability. Eric can't simply approve those. It requires council, uh, action.
That's fine. Okay, consent. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
So, um, appreciate having this, but, um, for, for future, it's just, uh, we had one attachment on this agenda item. It was a 37 page PDF contract. And guess what? Yeah. So if in the future, I was looking for the bluff bottom on a front.
Give a synopsis on a memory.
You know, staff.
Memo. I'll do that next time.
And or, you know, because I was thinking, my, another question was what has changed? I thought maybe this might have been a contract, um, you know, well, maybe this was an existing or changes in determined conditions, redline the differences. So. Right.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Rob, uh, John, go ahead.
Uh, Chief, I have also went through the contract and I see we're able to share information with other municipalities.
Correct.
And I went through all those. They're, they're all our neighbors. That's good. We got them all covered. There's only one we're missing. And I'm sure it's because they don't have Flock, but where are we in the sense of Marta? Marta wasn't in your list. I'm guessing they don't have, uh, Flock as far as you know.
Do have Flock. Uh, I did see them at the Flock Forward Conference. Uh, I will check with Major Creek. He is, uh, in touch with, um, the, their real time crime center manager and I'll check on that. Sure.
Yeah, to me, that's important. I mean,
Yes, sir.
Crimes may not happen on Marta, but it's a major transportation hub that we should have access to for sharing real time data for anything that's leaving the city of Dunwoody.
Absolutely.
So that's missing from this contract.
Yes, sir.
I would love for it to be added if it's possible to be added. I don't want to hold it up for it, but I think it's important that we look at it from that perspective. And, uh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rob? Nothing. Okay.
Yeah, great catch.
Anyone else? All right. I think it can be consent, but if you can get more, I mean, we want you to get Marta. Let us know if we cannot, or if you need our help with Marta, just let us know or let me know.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Rachel.
Point of information, if I could. Um, Chief, if there's any access that Georgia State University has, since there is separate governmental issue, if they happen to have Flock, just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm thinking of other governments that are within the city limits.
School system?
The school system, again, I don't know, but I'm thinking from those two perspectives, if they, Georgia State, the Cab County School System or separate governmental entities, if they need to have agreements and have Flock, we should add those at the same time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Rachel.
This one's pretty straightforward. Um, so stage door since incorporation has been known as stage door players. Um, they have since in their attempt to re-bark it and expand their, um, their net, if you will, um, to rebrand. So they would like to change their legal entity to stage door theater. Um, so tonight, uh, there's a little bit of information in your packet, just kind of, you know, why they want to rebrand, but um, essentially I'm here to request that you approve their legal entity change.
Does anybody have any comments on this? I just, the attorneys told us to, we're moving on. I asked that question.
I'm to blame. I didn't want somebody one day to ask, where did this come from? You got a contract with somebody.
They can call themselves what they.
Right. I think it's because they're changing their legal name, not just the title, because they've been stage door theater, I think, like on social media for a little while now. But it's all good. All right. Next up, Rachel.
There it comes. Okay, so this one's a little different. Um, so as you're well aware, um, every year we have our Black History Month and Women's History Month. Mural exhibit, um, this stemmed from, from COVID, um, just again, as a way to activate, um, the skate park, maybe for, for those people who don't actually actively skate, just still to, to draw attention to the area. It's had great success. Um, since that time, we've had 50, um, murals acquired over the years. Um, the last few years, the Dunwoody High School students have gotten involved, which is great. Unfortunately, those 50 murals are, are in Brook Run at the amphitheater storage. Um, so it's kind of a good problem to have, I guess, if you will. Um, but really what, what I'm looking for tonight is a way for us to, to get those murals hopefully back to the artists. That's our intent. Um, because other than showing them in the current month and Dunwoody Arts and Culture Month, they have to, they have to send storage. Again, that's just kind of what, um, what we have here. Um, what we've, I've worked with purchasing, what we'd like to do, um, is, is start the bidding, if you will, murals are, are as is. Start with the original artist. Um, professional artists would start at $50. High school students would start at $25. Um, and work with them, um, to renegotiate, um, so they could basically reacquire their murals. We've, we've gotten requests over the years, um, from several artists, several parents who would like to see their work. Because of, because these are four by eight plywood boards. They are hard to find another home for. Um, we've talked about putting them out maybe along the trailway, but after probably a year or two, they would just not look like they, they should. A little bit of a financial impact slide here. Um, this is if, if all the artists came to us and said, yes, we'll, we'll buy my art back for $50. If all the students came back and, and purchased them for $25. Um, and then of course going forward, potential revenue would, would depend how many exhibits we have. I've also worked with purchasing on our proposals going forward where this language of art would be embedded in the request. Um, so essentially the city would own the mural for one year. Um, and then at the end of that one year, um, term, we would again, start the process for the artists to buy back. So I'm here tonight to, um, to answer your questions you have about the language, um, work, work with you on how we quote unquote surplus best way we can to, to get these to a good home.
I like the idea of selling back art that's not being displayed right now to the artist. Moving forward, why not just rent the art from the artist for a year? And then they would still maintain ownership and get it back once the year is up.
So we could, I can, I can work with purchasing on that. The only other time, I'm not sure how Alan does it with, with Amplify at school. Um, we do a, a lease agreement when we do our Snapdragon's garden, um, with Kathy Walton, the metal creatures, kind of like a consignment, if you will. Um, so that's a, that's a better approach. I can certainly look at that.
If that's the, that eliminates the administrative step later on, that's just all right, your period's up. Thanks for sharing your art with us for the year.
Sure.
Now, if you'd like to display it somewhere else.
And I, and like the city of Knoxville, their entire public art collection, except for maybe the murals painted on buildings is rented. And those are big sculptures and big works, so the numbers are going to be very different. But it seems to me that we could rent them for a year, basically for what you're, you work out, because we don't want artists to not participate because the financial side doesn't make sense for them. But it's clean, I think it's cleaner in the future just to lease them because we have no way. It's not like we are sitting. We, we don't have a museum that can display them. We are not going to hang them in city hall, the building here, and we don't have room anywhere. I mean, the meeting room, and we don't have any room here. So I think that leasing art is actually very common, uh, for municipalities and local governments and probably lots of museums and stuff. And so I think that to, to his point, I think that would be a really good strategy.
Sure.
And then we don't even have to think about what to do with them. Like we don't have to feel guilty that they're sitting in a storage facility, also probably taking up space that could be used for like getting ready for.
I know this is, yeah, this, this has been on my list, um, for, for a few years now. Um, it was suggested that we paint over. I can't, I just, I know we, I just, I can't in good, good consciousness.
No, and just, but I think becoming a landlord of the prop of the art is a better strategy to use. Go ahead, John.
Is there a way to publicize what's out there? How are you going to do this? Let's say I'm, I might be interested in one of them. I want to see them all. How, how are we going to publicize? You're going to go through, they don't want them. They come back to us, we're going to sell them. How are you going to, any ideas on how you're going to publicize or do that?
So what we've proposed is, um, I would have 14 days to direct negotiate with the original artist. And if after 14 days, they're either non-responsive or say, I, you know, I can't take it back, then it becomes public and then we would publicize it and, um, and everyone would, they would have to come to Brook Run, parks can't transport, murals everywhere. Um, and we would do the same thing with the, with the student works. So really 14 days for the original artist, after that, 30 days for the public, and then whatever's left after that would have to be surplused.
All right, so you don't have a photo collection of what they are and publicize those in any way?
We do, we could do it that way, like a catalog, if you will.
Again, I'm just trying to think of how it's going to work. Anyway. I'm interested in seeing them. Thanks.
Yeah.
Maybe, uh, next year's first kickoff at Groovin' on the Green. Maybe you have them off the side there.
Something else in the, in the works for that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, are we okay with, I mean, I don't even, do we even have to, this feels very administrative to me, Eric, and Ken, this feels very administrative to me. I don't know that. I appreciate the education and I think we've come up with a good solution, but do we need to see this again? Discuss it internally, bring it back to consent if you do.
The surplus was, was what we wanted to make sure y'all saw.
Okay, well, we appreciate the education, but I don't think there's anything here for us to approve. Uh, I mean, it can be under.
Under state law, the city can't surplus it just by. Under state law, the city can't surplus it just by administrative action.
There you go. Okay. Just put it on consent. There it is. Sorry.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're up next. So can we, I'll just give a brief two minute while you're getting ready on the Veterans Memorial, which is, is it, when we saw it, in case anybody forgot or wasn't here, a few meetings ago, we were underwhelmed. And we asked staff to go and meet at least with our veterans group. And there were a few other people there and Rachel's going to update us on what happened since.
And yes, so we, yeah, you're exactly, there's my summary slide. Mayor discovered it. So we did, we, we met with the veterans a week or so ago, I believe. Walked the site, showed them the plans and just overwhelming support of, of what our concept is. Specifically, the soldiers cross, that bronze soldiers cross as you're walking up and the eternal flames that really speaks to veterans, that's something they, they really like to see a lot of other municipalities have that same concept. And while we were out there, you were able to see now that the Vietnam Memorial is completed with this being an open memorial plaza, you'll be able to see the other as you come up to ours, if you will. And then of course, the two memorials would, would still connect. Long-term plans would be maybe an option for additional benches, plaques. We did talk about bringing back the, the, the brick program. They love that. They, they suggested some areas where if, if we're able to expand where it would be best to put those offered support to, to help get that program back off the ground when we're ready. But just really, really overwhelming positive support. They're, they're excited for it. And they, they said they're happy to, to help however they can.
Uh, Joe.
So, hey, Rachel, we don't have 5.7 million like Sandy Springs did to buy their builders, but they did create, the mayor over next door is leading a group called Sandy Springs Foundation that they're doing for fundraising.
Or statues.
And they're doing some buy a brick program, whatever, and some more stuff. So I'd like to have a, if we could talk, talk to us a little bit more about how we could ask for, you know, sponsorships or corporate, either from corporate, public at large, there's a small money, there's the seven, six figure, who knows what. I mean, not seven, not, I'm sorry, five figure, why not instead or four figures? So any thoughts about that?
So we do have, so I've, I've looked into memorial grants. I'm still, still trying to find when that would, would apply to us. So that would be One Avenue. And then just the, I think now that the Vietnam Memorial is finished, there's, there's a lot of overwhelming support just to finish that area. And now I have some great contacts that I think if we wanted to go that direction, we could, we could have a lot of support. We of course would have to, to look at pricing donations because the, the Vietnam Memorial, you know, all that was donated. So you have to see as far as fundraising, how that would have, how we do that with our typical bid process and so on and so forth. But I, I do think if, if we wanted to explore that, we would, we would have support.
Do we have a, you know, the, before I wasn't here in the city when the DeKalb built it, but they had the brick program? Was that through the county?
Well, I'm at the VFW post initially.
Initially. So I think I have some thoughts, but does anybody else have questions? Okay. So in Sandy Springs, the city prepared the park and the fundraising, which is really being led by Councilman John Paulson, who's a veteran, I believe, he is a veteran. I mean, it is through, the donations are going to the foundation, but it, it's, I think the Sandy Springs Foundation might do other things too, but I can't tell. But the they're raising funds for the statues and kind of where my head is with this, because we don't, first of all, we have to work with DeKalb County because it's their memorial too. So we have to, it's not necessarily your responsibility. It's probably my responsibility or a representative of us or Eric's or somebody's to start a conversation with them about what they're okay with us doing because it's technically, I mean, I don't know, it's sort of ours, it's sort of not. But I think they'll be okay. Robert Patrick is certainly aware. He's given us some money that we've used for design. I know that the group you met with was overwhelmingly positive. I do not think it was a particularly large group of people. And I kind of wonder about taking a half step back at this point and pulling some committee together potentially. Well, first we need to talk to DeKalb County. That's got to be our first step. And then go from there because I do think that the Vietnam Veterans Memorial shows very clearly that we, someone should be able to fundraise either, like, maybe this is, I don't even know how much this would cost.
And we're not sure.
We're not sure, but like maybe this is the city and county's goal to fund, but if there's an, if there's a committee that thinks it should be more or believes there should be enhancements, that's what they fundraise for. So, but I think the first step, and I'm sorry, I didn't think about this a few weeks ago, is, is it, John actually pointed it out to me, we need to talk to DeKalb because Robert is a commissioner, but he's not the entire commission. So we'll work on that first. And then the rest of you can be brainstorming about who should lead this effort. Somebody can reach out to John Paulson and talk to him about what it's looked like. They have, what I think is impressive of how they're doing it is, is they have lots of ways to recognize a veteran in your life, different price points. You know, it's, it's like adopt a brick, but it, so it starts at $200, but a bench is $4,000. There's different things you could do. I said, if it was three, if it would cost $300,000 and our bricks were 300, we would have to sell a thousand bricks. I mean, there's, there's different ways to look at the funding of all this. But if there's a group that feels passionately that it should be more than, then perhaps they could help us fundraise. Because in Sandy Springs, the enhancements, I mean, their park is more elaborate than we're talking about their base, but the enhancements to the base are being funded by the donations. Go ahead.
I, I hear, I hear you, but I, we can go to DeKalb, but DeKalb's first question is going to be, well, how much does it cost? And how much do you have? So I guess like before we talk about enhancements, we should probably figure out what the base is, right? And, and go from there and then go to cabin. I mean, for all we know, it's $500,000 and Cab will say here. I'm, I'm just saying, let's, let's play pretend. Best case scenario, but I'm just saying like before we talk about enhancements and raising money, I think we should know what haven't, okay, I think we're all saying that in, this is the design. Let's figure out how much it costs and go from there.
That's fine. We could do it simultaneously. I think first we need DeKalb's permission, sort of. Do you, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know what a lease agreement says or whatever.
Look at the agreement.
I mean, we probably don't, I mean, they probably will say yes. They are, they have no money. I mean, I attended the meeting with, they, they don't have a lot of extra money. But I think we can simultaneously, Eric, I believe we can simultaneously price this out.
We, we could. And one thing we like to do, Mayor, and like I said, the council can make a decision tonight or not on the demolition. We like to get started on doing something because the big thing is, are we all, we're going to get away from what's there. You know, that was an old gazebo that was converted to where it is today. And the drawing you have in front of you, or I saw on my computer now, but the main drawing, it doesn't do justice to the site actually, because the site sits up on a hill more than it shows here. There are a lot more trees out there than this shows. But when you're standing out there, what we wanted to create was a sense, you know, a solemn sense out there when you're, and you can look at that, you can look at the Vietnam, Vietnam Memorial and see it all. And then behind you is the other marker that has the flag where we do the Veterans Memorial. So it all kind of lines up. This, like I said, this, the drawing is a little underwhelming, but when you're on the site, it looks very nice. The brick program, you'll see, you know, one of the drawings shows where you'd see the brick, the, the more red color there. That would cut back the, you know, right now it's all brick out there. This would be concrete and granite and then have the brick enhancements. Then the bricks later could go along the edge, as Rachel mentioned, that's the expansion of that program as it's currently designed. This is not final, final version, but we would like to move forward with some demo.
So I think that, that to Stacy's point, we ought to price this. We can simultaneously have conversations with DeKalb because Robert gets money every year, Commissioner Patrick, I'm sorry, gets money every year. So he could maybe contribute some more. Go ahead.
And I'd hope Commissioner Terry, he's, you know, he's our commissioner too.
He's our commissioner too.
I agree with what everybody has said, Eric's point where it's up on the hill. To me, up on the hill though, it'll be underwhelming during the day. There's not much there. It'll be flat. It'll be a couple of flags, but I guess depending on the nighttime vision, there could be lighting up, how many flags there are and the flags all have a light going towards the big US flag in the middle. During a nighttime visit, that would be, that could be nice. And that would be the base of the level version, maybe that we're looking for, something in that realm. And then the enhancement might be, there's a lot of empty space around there. I'm guessing statue locations for something else enhancement wise, right? Is that what we're thinking?
I think so.
That all sounds great, but like you say, the base price.
Go ahead, Joe.
And, and if we communicate with DeKalb in pre-cityhood, pre, before I moved here, but where we, there's a, I don't know what it's made of, but you know where we have the flag pole, the big flag pole. Next on the ground or at the base, there's some of these, there's like some. Well, there's some, some service members that passed away. I see a, a date of a, a, a person who passed in 2003 or four, something. And I'd like to keep that continuity flowing as well, because there's probably other people that deserve recognition. Yeah. If it's countywide, if we contact the county, well, then is there a list of KIA's from, you know, enduring freedom or all these other global war on terrorism things that we should be keeping abreast of? And if so, that would be DeKalb more than us.
Well, to me, that would then raise the question, is this a Dunwoody memorial site or DeKalb memorial site? For example, I love the, the honoring of the fallen police officer here within the city of Dunwoody. If we were to honor the fallen off fallen soldiers in the city of Dunwoody, does that then lessen the DeKalb aspect of it? I don't know. Just is it a Dunwoody memorial or a DeKalb memorial?
I guess that's all stuff we need to talk about.
Yeah.
Right. Well, we need, yeah. Okay. So I think that what we're asking for is a base price thing and then discussions with DeKalb and figuring out how we're going to manage it. I don't remember the history of how those names were selected on those pieces of granite, and I don't think they're all full. I think there's four. And I think one or maybe two have names on it.
Two are blank and two have names.
Okay. All right. So we have a lot of work to do to get us in a position to understand, but I think the base price, and I still share John's concern that during the day, it's a little underwhelming. I know that it would look different if we were there, but I think we could, I think we're a community that could help fund enhancements in memory of people they love or people that are currently veterans, whatever. So we'll, we'll look at all that. Anything else? Public comments? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Wrapping us up. No pub, well, sorry. Anybody? Public comments? Seeing none. Eric, city manager comment?
No additional comments, Mayor. Thank you.
No executive session, correct? Council comments? Joe?
Someone at the earlier public comments had mentioned about engaging with public officials and greater. Tomorrow night here, unless my calendar has been updated, there is a JCRC Atlanta.
Oh, they postponed it.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Never mind then. It was going to be tomorrow night.
Right.
They postponed it. Kind of form. Early advanced, early advance in-person voting ends this Friday, correct?
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM the rest of the week.
And I will keep it specific, I, I'll keep it generic here on conversations because I've been trying to stay away from the news, but you know, when I was in the military, you had in a leadership, even whatever, when you saw something that was not accurate, i.e. not to standard or inaccurate or so on, it was called an on-the-spot correction. Task not to standard, something said something, it's wrong. So I'm trying to allude to fact checking. I just spent three weeks over in Europe and I had a, a guide over in Hungary, which told us that Ukraine is bombing their own schools and hospitals. Did she believe that? I had a, a couple that was on our tour from Brazil that believed two very famous American females politicians are transgender. They believe that. And then we have people that, you know, I don't want to even get too close to home, but former local police chief, retired senior two-star general stating inaccuracies of what the federal government is doing. So please just step back from the noise and, and pause and really just, you know, think about what's going on. And I, I really encourage everyone to get out and vote. I'm going to be voting early because you never know what might happen if you get sick or something. Thank you.
Anybody else? I want to thank the Dunwoody Police Department and Dunwoody Parks Department for a fantastic truck or truck retreat last, I mean, just like a few days ago, Thursday night. I mean, there were a million people there or so. There were tons and tons. The field was covered up. The playground was covered up. It was a lot of fun. It was an extraordinarily good event for the city of Dunwoody. Everybody be careful trick or treating. Remember you don't have to leave your light on if you don't like the little children coming to ask for candy and even big kids love children. So I said, you don't have to, you don't have to leave the light on if you, whatever. But anyway. With that, I need a motion to adjourn. So moved by John.
Second.
Second by Rob. All in favor, say aye. See y'all next time. Good meeting.